The meeting, Board Meeting of King George County School. If we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by King George Elementary and remain standing or kneel for silence. Thank you. Okay, King George Elementary School, did you want to say a few words?
I'm Madison Miller, and I like to do Safety Patrol because it's really fun because I like helping people and to make sure everybody stays safe.
My name is Danica Simpson, and what I like about Safety Patrol is I get to be with all my friends, but like we get to help people where like so they don't fall and it's fun. And I just really like it because you get to enjoy being with friends, but also you, like I said, you get to help people and it's just really fun.
You want to lower the microphone just a little, put it down. There you go.
My name is Waylo Scott, and I like Safety Patrol because it's really fun and I make sure people don't run and don't get hurt.
Hi, I am Aubrey Schulman, and I like Safety Patrol because I like helping people and make sure they don't fall and get hurt.
Hi, I'm Lydia Smith, and I like Safety Patrol to keep people safe.
That's good. Well, thank you.
And I'm Amanda Code. I've been the sponsor for eight, nine years now. And Ms. Rinko was actually one that started the chapter many years ago. And I picked it up from her when I came on board. They are a great group of kids. They take their jobs very seriously, and they pride themselves on being role models.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Okay, now we have some recognitions. The first is the Student to Student Month of the Military Child. Thank you again, King George Elementary Safety Patrol.
Good evening, Chairman, Board Members, and Members of the Community. My name is Miriam Tate. I am a junior at King George High School and also the President of our Student to Student Club.
My name is Kamora White. I am a sophomore at King George High School, and I'm the Vice President of Student to Student.
My name is Jenna Weins. I'm a junior at King George High School, and I'm the Marketing Manager for Student to Student.
So what is Student to Student? Student to Student is a student-led, faculty-advised organization headed by the Military Child Education Coalition. Our club's purpose is to support all students, but especially military-affiliated children, with their transitions and adjustments into our school, help form new relationships, and to encourage their success with 100% acceptance no matter how long they remain in King George. These past two years, we have held activities within our schools. You can go to the next slide. We have held activities within our schools such as selling Valentine's Day candy grams, activities on Dalgrin Space such as our PJs and pizza movie night, and community service with our Military Care Package Drive. We are holding a Spirit Week next week for the Month of the Military Child.
And the days are World Culture Day, Favorite Military Branch, Wear Purple, Crazy Camo, and Stars and Sparkles.
And we encourage everyone to wear purple on Wednesday, April 19th, for the National Purple Up Day. We will also be participating at Family Day in May.
And we are very proud to announce that we are Purple Star Certified for next year.
In October of last year, I was selected to attend the Frances Hasselbine Student Leadership Program in New York at the West Point Military Academy alongside nine other students from the world. We spent a week assessing our leadership skills and building beneficial ideas to implement into our home communities. You can go to the next slide. I learned, gained so much insight after speaking with the cadets, experiencing some college courses, experimenting in the Center of Enhanced Performance, and sharing with the other program recipients during our team-building exercises. I hope to continue to share my teamwork and leadership skills with our club members and my peers. Thank you for your continued support, especially for the military children in our county. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you very much. Now we have the 2023 V S B A Regional Spring Forum Art Contest Presentation.
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. Am I on? Yes, I'm on. Okay, so this evening I have the distinct honor and privilege of recognizing our 2023 V S B A Regional Spring Art Contestant Participants. So in order to participate in this, students had to submit either in a work of art or photography that must be created by the student during participation in the school's art program. And what we do is we take these down to our Regional School Board and Superintendent Meeting at Tappahannock every year. And there's about 17 school divisions, and we always have a great showing with our students and the number of students that participate and also the number of students that receive awards. So if you were fortunate enough to be able to be here tonight, I'm going to name everyone that participated this year. Once I call your name, if you could come forward, and Ms. Rinko, if you could help me hand out the certificates, that would be helpful. So the students that participated this year, Ms. Ella Cheney from Potomac Elementary School. Mr. Noah Grego from King George Elementary School. Chasky Castalo Alfaro, I'm sorry if I butchered that name, from King George Elementary School. MLI Mounds from Sealston Elementary School. Mason Eddy from Sealston Elementary School. Sophia Turnman from King George High School. Brianna Madison from King George Middle School. Sarah Keith from King George Middle School. And then finally, we have Alice Madigan, who was a third-place winner, and will have her piece of artwork displayed at the V S B A Building all throughout the school year. So congratulations. Yeah, we're standing. If you guys see your picture behind you, you can grab it.
Yeah, we need to, yeah, why don't you guys? Wait, wait, well, I want to see him for a minute. Turn around for a second. Let me see him all. I'll show all of us, not just Mr. Bush. Oh, wow. Cool. Wow. Thank you. Well done. Thank you very much. Now we have the PTA Outstanding Educator, Ms. Rinko.
Good evening, Mr. Bush, Dr. Boyd, and distinguished School Board Members. My name is Terri Rinko, and I am President of the King George County Council of PTAs. At this time, I'd like to welcome my fellow PTA Presidents up to the podium. Traditionally, each year, each building-level PTA takes nominations for educators for what we lovingly call our Teacher Impact Award, also known as PTA Outstanding Educator. Each PTA President will introduce themselves and recognize this year's PTA winner from their building.
I have the privilege to represent, I am the PTA President at King George County Public Preschool. A parent shared with us, I have always known Ms. Jeanette was a fabulous teacher, but now that my student has had her, I can attest just how amazing she is. My student comes home every day from school and extends their day by many more hours of imaginative play. She has helped my student adjust to the school setting and challenge them in areas where they are weak. Ms. Jeanette is kind and compassionate towards all her students, and I can't think of a more deserving teacher. Thank you, Ms. Jeanette, for all you do.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Tharp. I am the PTA President for Potomac Elementary, and I have the honor of recognizing Ms. Ackerman, third-grade teacher at Potomac Elementary. Ms. Ackerman is a teacher who not only cares about her students in school, but also outside of school. She is active in the community and always showing her affection for her students. She is always genuinely concerned for her students if sick, absent, or et cetera. She is creative in making learning fun for all students. She also manages full-time family with young children of her own, bakes and fills people's home with joy in so many ways. My son hasn't always loved school or been the easiest to teach or the fastest to learn, but Ms. Ackerman hasn't given up on him. She pushes him to be the best he can be and to continue to improve. He loves going to school and loves everything she does for him and his classmates. Teaching isn't an easy job, but Ms. Ackerman makes it look so easy. She deserves to be recognized for all of her hard work and dedication. Not only is this Ms. Ackerman's first year at Potomac, but this is also her first year of teaching. So congratulations.
Good evening. I'm Susan Park. I'm the President of the King George Elementary School PTA. And I have the privilege of presenting this award to Mr. Dustin Pfeifer, who is a language arts teacher at our school. You are an exceptional, one-of-a-kind teacher, Mr. Pfeifer. You come up with engaging and creative activities related to the topics students are learning. You also challenge each student, encourage them to be their best, and create a learning environment that is fun, inspiring, and memorable. We're so grateful for your presence. And in the words of one of your fifth-grade students, no cap, you slay.
Inter accustomed to doing that.
I'm the Vice President of Sealston Elementary School, and I'm representing tonight. Ms. Miller is constantly pursuing new and creative methods of implementing lessons that capture the essence of the subject, resulting in her students' desire to be involved and be successful. She interacts with students in a way that captures their attention, keeps them engaged, and treats them with respect. Aside from her extraordinary teaching abilities, Sealston Elementary has her creative thumbprints spread throughout the building. She decorates and personalizes each of the custodian's doors, the cafeteria personnel area, and multiple bulletin boards for every holiday season on her special occasion. She wears so many hats beyond teacher and department chair. She never stops reaching for the next level of excellence for her students, her colleagues, herself, or our school. Ms. Miller.
And King George Middle Schools Outstanding Educator of the Year, Ms. Burke, unfortunately couldn't be with us, but I'd like to just read a couple of very warm, heartfelt words written about Ms. Burke. Paige is King George Middle School's Athletic Director, who is here every day after school working with parents, students, and coaches. She holds student athletes accountable for academics first and athletics second. She schedules buses, games, and events on a weekly basis for all athletes. Paige is also a member of the math department and a dean. She goes above and beyond to make sure students understand math concepts. She makes math fun. She reaches out to parents for both positive and negative events. She is a role model for other teachers. She is a mentor for new teachers. Paige tries new concepts in her classroom and makes her class innovative. Students ask and request to have her as a teacher. Congratulations to Paige Burke from the middle school.
And I'd like to introduce you to our high school PTA President, who has laryngitis tonight, but she is amazing. And this is Melissa Lamb, and we're going to co-present to our high school Outstanding Educator. King George High School's PTSA's Outstanding Educator winner is Noel Devoi. Noel Devoi has worked with students with visual impairments in King George County for 15 years. During much of that time, she has been a TVI, Teacher of the Visually Impaired. As a TVI, she works diligently to provide Braille and expanded core curriculum instruction to students with visual impairments at all grade levels. She makes sure her students have their course materials in accessible format such as Braille, large print, or audio recordings. She keeps up with current technology, and she teaches students the skills which enable them to use tools like screen readers, dictation software, and Braille note-takers to complete and turn in assignments. In 2018, she added a second role when she became a Certified Orientation and Mobility Specialist. Now she is also the person who teaches students how to know where they are and get where they're going using a white cane. With her instructions, students learn to make their way around the school building to their classes. They also learn to measure, to cook and clean during their sessions with her, and usually have fun at the same time. Noel always has high expectations for her students. She encourages students to do their best and advocates on their behalf to help each of them fulfill their full potential. She encourages families because she has her own child with a visual impairment, and they know she can understand and empathize with them. She is always willing to share her extensive knowledge of programs, services, and resources. Noel manages the Tiny Vision Department with an abundance of planning, attention to detail, and a hearty dose of good humor. She was an encouragement to me in my journey to becoming a TVI as my mentor teacher, and I continue to learn from her every day. Congratulations to Ms. Noel Devoi. Congratulations to all of this year's Outstanding Educators.
Thank you again. My fault. All right, thank you again. All right, now we have public comment, and sometimes this is not read, but let me read this before any public comment this time. If you wish to speak, make a public comment, you need to see the clerk ahead of time if you can to sign up here, or you can sign up online if you are accessing us online. And when recognized by the Chair, the speakers will be asked to identify themselves by name, state their relationship to the school division, such as a staff member, student, parent, community member, and so on, and indicate in which magisterial district you reside in. Commentary during the public comment is generally limited to three minutes or to an amount of time per speaker deemed reasonable by the Board Chair, but we will stay with the three minutes. And we have one that has signed up. Are there any online? All right, if I would ask this person, they would come forward, I believe it is. If you'd introduce yourself. Oh, Carolyn Deloach was also, okay, that's fine. Yes. It's fine with me. All right, that's fine. Yeah. Yes, please.
Good afternoon, Board Members. My name is Haley Baker. I'm a resident, future resident of King George County and a future parent of King George County Schools. I just want to take the time to say thank you very much for bringing the J E C addendum back on to the agenda and the discussion that's going to be had. I can't wait to work with you all to come to a resolution. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My name is Miriam Neme. I am a parent and volunteer in King George County Schools. I am the parent to five students that are in King George County Schools. I live in the James Monroe District. I would like to address the issue of the bullet found in the fifth-grade classroom in Sealston Elementary School on Thursday, March 30th. As a parent of a fifth-grade student and two other students at Sealston Elementary School, I'm trying to understand what appears to be a lack of action. What I would like to, what do I say to my child who asks me, am I going to die today? How do I send my child back to school and feel confident future situations will be handled safely and seriously? Our Family and Student Handbook states, "Searches by school officials." The standard for search by school official is reasonable suspicion. Reasonable suspicion goes beyond a hunt or supposition and must be based on individual suspicion of wrongdoing. S R R shall not become involved in administrative or school-related searches unless specifically requested by the school to provide security protection and for the handling of contraband. Is a bullet a reasonable suspicion? Why were backpacks not searched? What steps were taken that we are not aware of? Why can we not know what steps were taken? What was the first step when the bullet was found? Who responded to the scene? Sealston is a school, family, and community. How do we rebuild trust from the situation? Why wait until four days after the situation to address the situation to the entire district? Do we need to make a more clear policy so we can ensure that if a bullet is found again, administrators can perform the necessary searches to ensure our students' safety? What constitutes a dangerous item? Can we add clarification to ensure everyone understands the steps and policy when a bullet is found? How can our students and teachers feel safe to learn? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next.
Hi, my name is Carolyn Deloach, and I'm one of the school counselors at Sealston Elementary. I am the mother of three kids in King George County Schools. My youngest is at the preschool, my middle daughter Alice is at Sealston, and my son Jackson is at the middle school. I have been in public education for 19 years, nine of them with King George County Schools. My husband is a from here, and I am a come here, but I pretend I'm homegrown King George County. I love this community and school system. I love how this community cares for our kids by attending football games, band competitions, and plays. The small-town care that we have shows, towards one another, shows what a special place King George is. Today, I'm coming to the School Board to humbly request your consideration on having a productive discussion on how to improve best practices of keeping our kids safe as possible while they are at school. On Thursday, March 30th, a bullet was found in a fifth-grade classroom. Due to the Virginia School Search Resource Guide put out by the Virginia Department of Education, we received direction that we could not search the students' backpacks due to the policies put out by the Department of Education's Virginia School Search Resource Guide. Dr. Boyd can attest to my disdain to this decision not to search backpacks by my 3:45 Thursday phone conversation where I gave him an earful for my confusion in how we can say kids are safe when we have half of what we need to kill a child by having a bullet in a classroom. After spending hours researching the Virginia search and seizure policies, I have come to the understanding that our hands were tied due to the Virginia State Guidelines of search and seizure. We could not search a class set of backpacks because we found a bullet on the ground. In my opinion, this is a state policy issue, which is a conversation for a different audience. I am here today to request our School Board to have a lengthy discussion to come up with ways we can keep our kids safe if we are not able to search backpacks of full classes due to state restrictions. Thank you for your time and consideration. If you have any questions, I would love to partner with you to improve policies and practices in King George County Schools.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? All right, thank you. Now we'll go on to the, any changes to the agenda?
Yes, I would like to add the discussion of Trigger Lane Policy J E C to the agenda.
All right, discussion on Trigger Lane, and what's the reason for that?
The subject has come up several times, but I don't believe there's ever been any closure regarding it. So I've provided some documentation and would like to have a conversation about that.
Did you, yes, Ms. Gonzalez?
I'm certainly in favor of having a conversation about that. I would just, for the sake of having a productive conversation, I would recommend it be added to a future agenda, say at the next meeting, so that we have the policies in the background. I know it was presented last year, I believe it was discussed in a meeting, but we could get a refresher of that and have it available for the conversation so that it was a fully informed conversation. That's just my recommendation.
Mr. Rolls?
I'd be with that recommendation, unless there's just some brief introductory remarks that you'd like to make that would help this time.
Well, I have to apologize. I had assumed that it was put on the agenda, and I don't know whether it's my fault or whatever, because Ms. Hoover and I had conversations about it, and I had discussed it, and it wasn't on the agenda, and that may have been my fault. If it's all right with the Board, I would like to, out of respect for when Ms. Hoover has prepared and others to listen tonight, and we still may continue it as further discussion for the next Board meeting. But I'd like to allow her to make a presentation briefly, and then we can continue the discussion. It doesn't have to go to an action item, but I do think that we should have closure to this discussion because it's come up at two other Board meetings last year. But thank you. You are correct, Ms. Gonzalez and Mr. Rolls, is you do need to have time to look more at the documentation. So we'll add that to the discussion briefly, and depending on that, we may end up continuing the discussion depending on the rest of the Board and the way they feel after your presentation.
Okay, thank you.
All right, action items. Let's go to the Month of the Military Child Proclamation. Dr. Boyd?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, in your packet you'll see a recommendation for approval. And quickly, the background, King George County Schools is home to nearly 400 children who serve parents currently that serve in the military and hundreds more who support our military through work at N S W C Dalgrin. King George County Schools is seeking recognition by V D O E as a Purple Star school. The Virginia Purple Star designation is awarded to military-friendly schools that have demonstrated a major commitment to students and families connected to our nation's military. Schools that earn the award will receive a special Purple Star recognition to display on-site. One component of the Purple Star designation is the School Board passes a resolution publicizing the school division's support for military students and families. So my recommendation would be to approve the Month of the Military Child proclamation as presented. And if you turn the page, you'll see the proclamation there. And if I could quickly read that for the benefit of our audience. "A proclamation to designate April 2023 as the month of the Military Child, whereas King George County is proud to be home to many children whose parents serve in the military stationed throughout the local region, and whereas April has been designated by the Virginia Department of Education as the month of the Military Child, which is a special month to recognize and pay tribute to military members and their children for their daily sacrifices made and for their commitment, courage, and unconditional support for our armed forces. And whereas Virginia has one of the highest numbers of military-schooled children in the nation and is committed to being an active participant in the Interstate Compact of Educational Opportunity for Military Children, which facilitates military children transitioning in school systems across state lines, and whereas the children of our service members continue to make significant contributions to schools, communities, the nation, and our Commonwealth despite prolonged and repeated absences of one or both parents, and whereas all over And whereas, all of Virginia's public schools remain committed to the care and education of the children of the men and women of our armed forces. And whereas, by partnering with school liaison officers, military leaders, educators, and community organizations, V D O E provides the unique support needed for military service members and their families during all stages of transition and deployment. And whereas, the month of the Military Child reaffirms our commitment to ensuring excellence in schools, childcare, and youth services to military children who face unique challenges that our children their age never experienced. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the school board of King George County hereby proclaims April 2023 as the month of the Military Child throughout the school division, adopted by the King George County School Board on this 12th day of April 2023. Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Dr. Boyd. Do I have, do you want to have a discussion, or do I have a motion to approve this?
I move that we make the proclamation as presented.
All right, seconded. Seconded by Ms. Hoover. Any discussion?
I would just offer that the motion be amended to say that we adopt the proclamation or the resolution.
Or rather than say approve, that we adopt.
What did, Mr. Rolls, can you repeat what your motion was?
I don't even remember what I said.
Right here, he has, Dr. Boyd has written for the recommendation for the motion to approve the month of the Military Child Proclamation as presented. So you would like to change that to?
No, that's just, that's not what I heard in the motion.
Okay.
So I'm good with it as presented.
So is that, if we're, are we amending that, or is that, was that your motion?
That's pretty much what I said.
Okay, so the motion is repeated again to approve the month of the Military Child Proclamation as presented, and still seconded by Ms. Hoover. Any more discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, it passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, next we have the minutes of January 11th, 2023, the special meeting. Is there, why is that here? Is it just an approval, or was there some, it seems like this came up last time.
Right. Ms. Chair, I think we need to pull this again so we have the discussion about how we want to handle the way we write the outcomes of these hearings. Whether there's a change to format, or putting less detail on than we used to.
Isn't that part of the discussion we're going to have with the FOIA under discussion items, or not? No?
You know, strangely, those are both put in the same line, but they're quite different topics. And that FOIA, but yeah, so that's something I think we're talking about actually adding to the agenda next time.
So, but can we approve the minutes for this one? It's just, or there's a format that you wanted to change, Mr. Rolls?
Yeah, again, I think we, we used to include more information about the outcome of the hearing, and I think we include at least that much, maybe more. And so I think when we come to that discussion, you know, later, I mean, I think we probably need to get some legal advice on that.
So you're saying not to approve the minutes?
Right, it's postponed indefinitely until you've had this discussion and probably gotten some legal advice.
All right, Ms. Gonzalez, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I, I can appreciate the desire to maybe change the minutes, but for the sake of not letting that one linger, there are minutes, I believe, from a meeting in January. I would recommend we approve those, acknowledge that perhaps we want to alter or adjust what is included going forward, but to approve these, not, not table them indefinitely since they're already months old.
Yeah. All right, do I have a motion?
I move to approve the minutes from the January 11, 2023 special meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, seconded by Ms. Hawk, now more discussion, Mr. Rolls?
Yes, I mean, there's basically no information provided in these minutes, so I don't see any benefit to passing them. There's really no rush. It isn't providing more information. It'd be better just to wait, get it right, so we actually provide the information needed.
So you'd want to hold off on this indefinitely until we make a further decision about what is one of the discussion items?
Right, I mean, we'll figure it as fast as we can. I think the, brought up last meeting, but so now, at this point, as soon as we're going to be able to get, you know, legal counsel, which I think is the way forward, is going to be next meeting. We could try to do that for the closed session.
Further discussion?
Mr. Bush?
Yes, Ms. Hawk?
And I acknowledge that I was absent for this meeting, so I will abstain from the vote. However, the principle of the minutes is to relay that this event happened and the essence of what happened, and we have very detailed piece of information there with who attended, what it was concerned, and I think the minutes should stand. Minutes can always be amended at a later date.
Other discussion? Mr. Rolls, I guess, when I'm, I hear what you're saying, but your logic in this, we could do this with all of the closed sessions we've had over the last year or so, because you're saying it's a procedural thing, that we should go into it in a different manner. And that may be true, but the essence of the meeting isn't changed, it's a procedural thing. And so I kind of agree with Ms. Hawk in the fact, I really do, all we're doing is acknowledging that this meeting took place and what happened during the meeting, and if there is a change that we're going to make on procedure for going into closed session, that that would be something we would make going forward. However, we could make it, you know, to go back and make an amendment to the minutes, even after it's already passed, that has been done in the past, and there's nothing wrong with that. Yes, Mr. Rolls?
So you, you mentioned a change about how we go into closed session, but that's not what I'm saying here at all. It's talking about, usually for disciplinary hearings, we would say the action that resulted from the hearing. That's, that's what's missing, what I'm referring to, is waiting for.
Oh, for, for the clarification, legal clarification, is that what you're mentioning? So what you're saying is, is that we need to make it public, the action that we took, but not mention the, obviously, the student's name or the names of people, right?
Right, I mean, full details are TBD, but what we've initially done is just said, student with a number, violated the conduct, and here was the punishment. So that's what we always had, had done, and I think we should do at least that much. But again, that's a further, more of a discussion to have later.
And I understand you, but again, you could go back to all of these closed sessions and say the same thing about all of them in the past, couldn't we? That maybe they should have been done, had more disclosure, is really the word that I'd be using. I mean, I, I'm not disagreeing with you, all I'm saying is, is that's a discussion that when we make a decision, we can do that going forward, I think, to go backward with all of the closed sessions, to do that would be a little.
Right, I wouldn't do it, but I would, I would do it for this one. And I think just letting this one go is, is less likely that we'll come back to it versus just holding it up until we decide.
Okay, well, we've had a couple of comments, go ahead, now let's have, you know.
We just asked, what, why this one? We've had a number, why, why are you stuck on this one versus just drawing the line at the January 11th meeting and improving our process going forward?
Just because of the severity of this one. I won't go any more detail on that. I mean, just because of the seriousness of this one.
I, I think we're verging on inappropriate territory.
Yeah, I think we need to be a little, I, I hear what you're saying, but I really do, I think I was saying the same thing, Ms. Gonzalez even said it better than I did. But any other, Ms. Hawk, did you want to make a comment on?
Yes, yes, and I, I fully agree with Ms. Gonzalez. This is, this is very close to confidential information, and I think even discussing these details is not appropriate at this point.
And any further discussion? Dr. Boyd, did you want to lean in a little bit on this? It's up to you.
I, I certainly can, I, I understand all facets of the argument. One of the concerns that, that I have moving forward in, in identifying a lot of information or additional information is because we are a small school division, it's not very difficult to find out exactly who we're talking about in these discipline proceedings, and that concerns me for the child, and it concerns me for the family moving forward. So that, that would be my hesitation. I certainly understand the desire to want to know, or for our community to want to know how we handle particular discipline situations, and I feel there are reports available that identify that information. I do think it's very important, though, that we put the child at the forefront of this conversation and make sure that we consider the child and not exposing them to, to any unneeded scrutinism.
I concur with Dr. Boyd absolutely, because our first, our first priority has to be the student and to protect the student and the family, no matter what the incident.
I know we've gone back and forth on this, and obviously, as we all know, Robert's Rules of Order stated 10-minute deal, but that's okay. Let's make one final statement, if anybody has it, and then we'll take a vote. So, Mr. Rolls, did you have a final statement?
Well, I think where we're at in the agenda is merely to decide whether to approve these minutes, and we're sort of going on, having the whole discussion that we were going to have later. So as far as approving the minutes, I don't have anything else to say about that.
Any other final comments? All right, we will take a vote. All those in favor of approving these minutes as motioned by, I believe, Ms. Gonzalez, and seconded by Ms. Hawk, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one, Ms. Rinco?
She abstained.
Oh, I'm sorry, you, did you abstain?
Abstained.
I'm sorry, my fault. Motion passes three to one and one abstention. Thank you for that clarification, Dr. Boyd. All right, all right, let's move on. Now we have the discussion items, and let's go ahead and begin with, if you don't mind, with what Ms. Hoover had said about the Trigger Lane thing. Ms. Hoover?
In the, in the past, the residents of Trigger Lane have been, have asked to be allowed to attend King George County schools, and there seems to be some confusion because they pay personal property tax to the county of King George, but real estate tax, the county of Westmoreland. And basically, there's, the only, the only road in the entire county that is affected with residents is that lane. The rest is either woods with no homes on it or water. So that was another concern, was that other surrounding counties would have issues, but they're, right now, they don't exist, and in this packet is a, a copy of the G I S data that shows that there's really, literally no other houses on the property. And so there's also the fact that the boundary was established a long, long time ago, and this decision was made, I guess, in 2008. I'm sorry, did you have a question? But the, the residents that are asking for consideration have daycare or family members that care for their children that do live in the county. So they just were asking to reconsider the, to at least let their children attend King George County schools, and if that means that they have to pay tuition or something to that nature, they'd be willing to do that.
Okay, I think Ms. Gonzalez and so did Mr. Rolls mentioned that we do need more time to look at all this. I know we looked at it last year, but I do agree that we should have closure on this, and so I appreciate you presenting this, but maybe just a couple of brief questions now, but we will continue this discussion, give time for all of us to read through this. But any brief questions right now, Ms. Gonzalez?
So I had, I have a comment, I know this came up last year, certainly. I know I reached out to at least one of the individuals who had, who had emailed us with questions and come to make public comment. So I know there's the taxation issue, right, which is typically what's used, right, for our, you know, public school admission, and I can certainly sympathize because if I were living on Trigger Lane and faced with this, I would be duly irate about the situation. So I completely understand. To that end, since it seemed like an issue with the county, and I know we, in the past, we had gotten, I think Dr. Boyd had provided the background as to the policy changes and how the decision that had been made in the past. So I've reached out to one of the board of supervisors and forwarded the concerns to them, and I was just pulling up my email, right, about reaching out, since it seemed like a county issue, right? It seems like the, there may be a solution, but you know, the root cause is the fact that there's a discrepancy in the county lines and how the taxation is handled. So when I emailed the board of supervisors, they reached out to Ms. Hart. In, let me find my email here, right, the county, you know, the Commissioner Revenue Office, right, passing, excuse me, passing along the information and having them look at what the information was about the personal property records and so on and so forth. I did reach out, I did send a communication back to the one particular individual who had reached out and encouraged, as was encouraged to me from the board of supervisors, for them to reach out to the Commissioner Revenue Office and try to get, to look at getting the, the issue resolved. So I don't know if anyone has, I haven't followed up with any more of that. I, I, so I suppose while I'm truly sympathetic, because like I said, if it were me, I would be bent out of shape beyond words, and I'd be at all these meetings too. So I totally agree, but I do feel like it's a, it's a county issue. And at a minimum, some more, and I, like I said, I don't know if anyone has reached out to them further. I haven't reached out to Ms. Hart to get any more information, but it seems like that would be a prudent step in figuring out why that couldn't be resolved at a county issue, right, to get the lines straightened out so that people aren't buying houses and moving to somewhere that they don't know where they're paying taxes. So anyway.
Did you reach out, or did, has anyone reached out to Ms. Hart?
I have not, but I certainly can, thank you.
Okay.
Or recommend that the resident does.
Yeah, that was, I guess, my recommendation was recommend to all, to the residents to whom it affects, to start with the Commissioner Revenue and look into the property record, the tax records, and I mean, certainly take it, I would say, take it to the board of supervisors to get it addressed at the county level, which would then be a default, you know, impact to the schools.
All right, so in your opinion, based on what we went through last year, Ms. Gonzalez, that that probably would end up being a board of supervisors' decision rather than the school boards?
It's, it seems to me, unless there's, I know in the past, like, I feel like the conversation back in August, there was, I mean, I know there was, we, there were, it skirted around the conversation of having folks pay tuition or whatever, and so I'm open to that, right? But at a minimum, it seems like the first step would be for folks to contact the Commissioner Revenue and see if there wasn't some sort of path forward, so that the records are actually legitimate.
I can make that recommendation. I'm sure that they will come back with a, you know, perhaps an interim solution until that's handled, because I don't think anything happens quickly in that, but thank you.
So we'll look into that, maybe even you can give a Dr. Boyd, to help look into that situation. So we'll come up with those answers, and it doesn't mean necessarily that we would not move forward as a school board to make a decision, but that is a very good point, is it may end up more in the court of board supervisors, or we could make a decision here and still have it with the board of supervisors, as they may make a more permanent decision, because if we made one, they would definitely have to pay tuition. And I'm curious, I, I think I asked this last time, Dr. Boyd, how many people, approximation, obviously, end up paying tuition for various reasons, and we allow them to attend even though they don't live here?
None.
None?
We have a no tuition policy.
Okay, so this would be the first, if we allowed this. Okay, that's what I, I thought I remembered that. Yes, go ahead, Ms. Hawk, let, Ms. Hawk and Ms. Gonzalez.
At this point, discussing tuition is premature since we do not allow tuition, and I, I think that's a substantial discussion in itself. In, in past years, it has, it has been very substantial. And I think the, it, the concern that we have is education, but I, I think that there are perhaps other services that these residents may be in need of or discussing. I think it is a larger issue, and if we focus in on one piece, then we're setting a precedent for other discussions around other pieces, and, and I'm concerned from, about the legal implications of that.
See, you have a good point. What you're saying is, is that it wouldn't be just a decision to allow them and then pay tuition, we'd have to make a decision about changing our policy regarding tuition, period. So that would be a, a minimum, that we'd have to do at least two of those, one to change our policy, and then the second one to deal with them. Okay, well, let's, out of respect for those people that live in that area and for Ms. Hoover, let's still, I know that's a big thing, I agree, Ms. Hawk, but let's look at it at least, and let's have some closure, you know, as quickly as we can on this, so we don't have to move forward, even if it does mean, it's kind of like, okay, it means we'd have to change the policies for our tuition. It means we'd have to make an exception here to allow them. It also means that we're looking at board of supervisors to make a more permanent decision. But let's look at all those and make a, I think, out of respect for the people that live there, let's have closure on this, whatever we do. Ms. Gonzalez, you had a comment about it?
I was pondering it, I, I guess, the, I understand that other school divisions charge tuition. I think, Mr. Bush, you've, you've commented, the places you've worked and passed have done that, and I can understand where that would make sense. I hesitant, or I'm inclined to return to a topic that I do often, but just considering the nature, I, you know, in our budget presentation this year, you know, Dr. Boyd put in information about like how our schools, like, you know, are verging on being at capacity, and just, there are a lot of trickle effects, right, as we, you know, make exceptions here and there, right? Their impacts to, right, our, our, you know, if we were a large division with ample funding and ample space. There are impacts to, right, our, our, you know, if we were a large division with ample funding and ample space and continued and reliable streams of revenue, I feel like maybe we'd be having a different conversation too. But it's just, I think it's, we would be negligent to lose sight of the down, the potential downstream implications to, to admitting, you know, admitting, making those exceptions.
I hear what you're saying. You're talking about precedents as being a very big deal and then also the, our situation as far as the numbers of students and we're close to capacity. That's a good point. Mr. Rolls?
So just like to ask Ms. Hoover to walk us through the packet of pictures you've given us. The, some of the pictures are pretty clear, but the first top one, I'm not sure exactly what we're looking at there. Mind just taking us through?
Want this one or the after that?
On this one?
It's about fourth picture.
So there's two different sets of pictures. I'm not sure which one you're referring to.
This one that says Sealston, King, King's Highway.
King's Highway.
This one right here.
That's just the, the county line where it separates the Sealston District from, I guess, Stafford County.
Okay, so that's, Trigger Lane is on the border with Caroline County, right? So that's?
Westmoreland. This is just, this was just to print out to show that there were no other homes affected except.
Okay.
Because that was the comment that was made in the past. And I believe there, there are 10 homes on that lane total. And it's not a development, it's just 10 homes on one road. And one of those homes, if you look closely, is in King George County. I don't know if it's on this side or the other side of Route 3, but the line is kind of crooked, in other words. But that's good, good, good advice to go and talk to the county. So I will advise the resident to do that and talk with Dr. Boyd.
So you're going to talk to the county and that may end up in the Board of Supervisors' hands, depending on the information that we get. And also, Dr. Boyd, Ms. Gonzalez had a very good point, and I don't, as a board, I don't want you to spend a lot of time, but just maybe you would know better than any of us, all of the tentacles that, and the precedences that Ms. Gonzalez was referring to, without doing a lot of research, just kind of maybe be ready next time to say, I think it would affect, you know, these four things or whatever. And again, I'm not asking you to go into depth of this. That's only if we end up actually making, continuing this and maybe making a motion, then we might have to go more in depth. But at least presenting, because I think Ms. Gonzalez had a good point, what are these tentacles that we'd have to be concerned with? She mentioned, I think, two or three, and I think you had a valid point. So let's postpone this for a further discussion next time, Ms. Rinco. And we'll gather more information. And thank you, Ms. Hoover, for presenting that.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a few more questions just to.
Oh, all right. Yeah, let's, we need to go on, but sure, go ahead. Let's make a last comment.
So are you saying that they have a King George address, but they pay taxes elsewhere?
Yes.
Yeah, that is confusing.
They pay, I think they pay.
They pay.
They pay both, perhaps.
Property tax?
Personal property tax to King George, but real estate tax to Westmoreland.
That's correct.
Yep, all that.
Yeah. So that's part of the dilemma.
Right.
Heard the policy.
Right. Yes, exactly.
Okay, and I guess I'll just say it's a big picture. So it sounds like the school board did go look at this in depth already, 2008. So it'd be, require some pretty compelling evidence just to overturn, because obviously they put time into this. And I imagine, I presume that they made a good decision based on the facts that they saw. So it'd be interesting to see if anything has changed since 2008 that would cause us to overturn that.
Again, I want to be careful not to spend too much time with this, but could we possibly, Ms. Rinco, or look at the minutes when this was discussed at the school board in 2008? Is that asking too much and include that in the packet?
We.
We, we had, Ms. Gonzalez?
We did that. Dr. Boyd did a thorough presentation of that last year, I do believe. Oh, this is the meeting minutes. There you go.
This is the meeting minutes.
Oh, from 2008. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Very diligent.
You are right.
Bringing the information.
All right.
So I don't know, I mean.
We don't need anymore. We just need to read this more thoroughly. Yeah. All right. Put this on the discussion for the next meeting and let's, again, the goal will be that we'll get closure with this, one way or another. All right, let's move on. Next discussion item, the FOIA slash BDDC dash F1, Special Meeting Minutes, disciplinary. And I believe that was Mr. Rolls. Did you put that on for discussion?
I, I don't mind picking it up because I think our conversation at last meeting was a conversation on FOIA and specifically Form BDDC dash F1. And it was my responsibility to go update the form with the verbiage that we considered. So I do have that in the packet for presentation, or for review of the board. If you turn, you'll see a draft copy of Form BDDC dash F1. And you'll see down at the bottom, Item 14, we've changed that verbiage in, in the motion to go into closed session. So again, you see some, some information struck in there, struck in there, and then some information that is underlined, which would be added as we discussed at our last meeting. So I'll just read that quickly as it, as it should be read moving forward. Pursuant to State Code Section 2 dot 2 dash 3712A of the Code of Virginia, I move that the board convene in a closed meeting to consider the, and then we fill in the blank there, depending on what it is that we intend to discuss, as permitted under 2.2 dash 3711A1 of the Code of Virginia. And then if you turn the page, we've also added the return to open meeting. And then that verbiage, as we discussed it at our last meeting, is I move that the King George County School Board return to open session and certify that pursuant to State Code Section 2.2 dash 37 point 12 dot D dot only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the chapter and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed session was convened were heard, discussed, and considered in the meeting by the public body. Those were the things added, underlined. And then you'll see below in the notes that there was also some inaccurate information there that we've updated as well.
Very good. Thank you for all this work, Dr. Boyd. Yeah, I think you did a good job. Yeah, this is the discussion that we had at the last meeting. So do I have a, a motion to go ahead and reflect these changes moving forward with a closed meeting or?
You can have a little more discussion. I'm sorry, I had to restart my computer. It blanked and.
Okay.
Have just slight.
Sure, go ahead.
And then it's probably easier just to discuss.
All right, fine.
Okay, I would just say.
The, Mr.?
That's not.
What did I say?
He wants to grab his artwork.
He just wants to grab the artwork. That's fine. It's fine. I'm sorry. Yes, absolutely. Go ahead. Yeah, thank you. Appreciate you being respectful. Thank you.
Yeah, all I would say is that last words before the parentheses in the motion to go to closed meetings is consider the, I would just strike that and, and say, so meeting two, and then inside the parentheses, say, insert meeting subject and purpose, which is just literally what the Freedom of Information Act says. Is what we're just saying there.
Sorry.
Would you repeat?
Repeat that again, Mr. Rolls?
So if you look at the new proposed language for going to a closed meeting, you see the open parentheses with the blank in the middle?
Yes.
Look at the words, consider the before that. I would just strike those. So we say, so it'll say 2 dot 2, 37A, Alpha, A, of the Code of Virginia, I move that the board convene in a closed meeting two. And then parentheses, and in the parentheses, say, insert meeting subject and purpose. Because if you look in the Freedom of Information Act and the VSP FOIA guide, I mean, that's, that's what it says, that's what we're putting there. So just saying generically, we're just going to say the subject and the purpose. And we may or may not use the words consider, you know, just depending on what the purpose is.
So to be sure I understand, you want to get rid of the words consider the?
Right.
And then the open parentheses, standard group of words saying what again?
Inside the parentheses, say, insert meeting subject and purpose.
But actually stating the subject and purpose.
Right. So I mean, if you wanted parentheses to say that, yeah, they're going to replace those words when they make the agenda.
Because that would change every time, depending on what the purpose is, right?
Very often, I mean.
Just want to make sure I understood.
But probably, you know, the current thing has the hiring, terminating, terminations. I mean, so it'd probably be something, I mean, that's what we use 90% of the time. So it'll be something along those lines, but.
Okay, I think, okay. So really, you're saying you're agreeing with what Dr. Boyd had put there?
Yeah, very small change.
The elimination of the words consider the.
Yeah, I mean, the only other thing is like down there, it says, as permitted under 2 dot 2 dash 3711 Alpha 1. So that 1 is the one that we use 90% of the time. So I think same thing there, we should make that generic and just put like the pound sign there for the number saying you're going to put whatever exemption applies, which is like 1 to 54 or something.
I see, I see. Okay, yeah, that would make sense. We do use 1 most of the time, but it could be even a different number. I see. Did you see that, Dr. Boyd?
Yes, sir.
I, I think we could make a motion with those amendments possibly? Yes, Ms. Gonzalez?
Can I offer, I know many, I know we've done this and approved, like approved, made motions to approve things that are on our discussion items. And really, I mean, most of the time, they're not, they're probably not super critical things that a lot of folks are going to weigh in on in the two weeks that pass before the next meeting. But, you know, in the past, we have received feedback from community members, right, about approving items that are on discussion that have not been thoroughly vetted. Again, I don't expect really to receive any, any feedback on this at all. But I, it has been something that I wanted to mention, and I would just, if this isn't time sensitive, and sometimes we have things that are, you know, paying for, you know, copiers leases and things like that. But if things aren't critical, I would recommend we stick to kind of good public meeting policy and, and follow our process of having discussion items one week and action items the following week, just to kind of maintain consistency and transparency on our intent.
That's a good point. So, Dr. Boyd, if you would come back then, maybe with the elimination of the consider the and then that parentheses, just put a pound sign to show that it could be any number related to the reason why we're going into closed session.
Yes, sir.
That's a good discussion. Anything else before we move on? Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. All right.
So I got to ask you, so under A, it says FOIA slash BDDC dash F1 and Special Meeting Minutes, disciplinary. So I mean, those are two totally different things. Are we? So what are we doing with the Special Meeting Minutes? Are we saying that we already had that conversation? We sort of had it in conjunction with our changes to the agenda, I'm sorry, with the approval of the minutes. But so, I mean, I say we're done with the FOIA BDDC thing, but are we going to say that the second part of that A is, we're going to have that conversation now? Or are you trying, are we saying that we're done with all that?
It's, it's listed. Go ahead.
Okay, so on that point, my recommendation is that we invite lawyers for a closed session next time to ask about what we can do there and basically talk about FERPA and any other kind of laws that might apply to what we would put out in minutes concerning student hearings.
I don't know if it, I don't know if it would rise to the level of having to have in closed session if it's a general topic. But other board members' comments, Ms. Hulk?
Yes, I, I think that we need to have a clear discussion and perhaps identify the questions that, that have legal consequences. But it's a very expensive proposition to ask attorneys to be here for, for an entire session. I think we need to propose specific questions that may need a legal opinion, but only consult an attorney when we've done that.
That's a good point. Any other discussion? Mr. Rolls, how do you feel about Ms. Hulk's suggestion about specific questions for the attorney rather than having a general meeting with them?
When we brought this up last time, I mean, it was suggested that perhaps we could send questions to you and you could just call and ask. But then it seemed like there was discontent at that idea that we prefer to have the whole board present. Is that, am I misreading that?
My thought is that if we have identified the questions, then we could certainly have an attorney come to the meeting with the answers already prepared for those questions. That's, that's a far shorter period of time than it would be to sit there and involve in the complete discussion.
So, Mr. Rolls, just listening to both of you, what about that idea of preparing some questions, giving them to me or to Dr. Boyd to send to the lawyer for the lawyer to answer those specific questions? I think he, most of those he could answer in open session. I'm not sure why it would need to be closed. Because we're talking about policies and procedures, not individuals. In other words, you're making a general statement, is how much can we share and how much can we not share? And maybe we can ask a specific question about that, that I don't think that would reach the level of going into a closed session. I may be wrong. Dr. Boyd, did you have any input with that?
I, I certainly concur with your remarks, Mr. Bush. I work at the will of the board, so if, if there is some clear guidance that the board would like to give me this evening as far as questions, then I certainly could submit those to an attorney, even via email and request that those answers be given in, in email response and then just present those answers to the board.
Yeah, I think that would also save a lot of money and still get your answers. But, Mr. Rolls, I want to be respectful of your input on this. What do you think?
Yes, we can. That seems reasonable enough. I mean, I was looking at the exemption for a closed meeting, getting legal advice. But yeah, maybe it might be profitable to be able to do it. Even doing it generically, it might still be profitable enough to do it that way.
Okay, so you, you would, you'd agree that you'll come up with some questions to Mr. Rolls? And then submit them maybe to Dr. Boyd, and then we can get an answer and, and give the answers in a public forum at the next meeting?
I think there will need to be some discussion. We sort of have it last time too about thinking, concerned about small town stuff and how that would apply.
Well, that could be part of a question though. That's actually, I think, part of a good question is, considering the size of our town, what do you think of how much we could share and not share and it still be legal? I believe, Ms. Gonzalez, you had a comment?
No, I don't. That's okay. Thanks.
So not just Mr. Rolls, but in the same area of how much we can share and not share in a closed meeting about disciplinary actions that we take with certain students, to come up with some questions, submit those to Dr. Boyd, and then he'll submit those to a lawyer, which will be presented to all of us in open session and then also anybody in the community that would want to hear. Is that acceptable? It's not a motion, but, all right, thank you.
And so just to be clear, those questions will come in the form of email from everyone?
Yes, form of emails, everyone? The questions to Dr. Boyd? Okay, yes. Thank you, Mr. Rolls. All right, moving on. Special Education Annual Plan, Part B, flow-through application.
Yeah, that's a mouthful.
Yes, Ms. Howard, it is. Thank you for being here.
Isn't that ironic though, right? Good evening. I'm Kate Howard. I'm the supervisor of Special Services for the Division. And I thank you for allowing me to be here tonight to present the annual plan, like to welcome new and returning members of the board. And I thank our technology crew over here for getting the PowerPoint to work. I know, I just want to make sure you all have a copy of the four slides and a copy of the plan because I do have a printed copy if you need it, and I will refer to it a couple of times. So if you need a copy, I'm happy to give you one. Okay?
I think everybody has it on board docs. Board members, are we all there? Okay, yes.
Okay. Well, I'm here tonight to present the proposal for the Local Special Education Annual Plan, Part B, flow-through funding for the upcoming school year. This is a, a formula-based grant from the state, and this money comes from the state in addition to the Special Education section of the annual school budget. This plan is reviewed by the Special Education Advisory Committee, which we held on March 29th, and it's just presented. And then I bring it to the school board as required. I'm going to break down the plan for you in the next three slides. So the first part of the plan reports out how funds were expended last year. The 611 funding is specifically used for students with disabilities in kindergarten through 12th grade. The majority of the 611 funds were used to employ teachers and support staff for students with disabilities. Funds were also used to purchase supplies to support classroom instruction and assessment materials, purchase and fix assistive technology devices, provide services to students, and for professional development for special education personnel and related service providers. The 619, or the Early Childhood Special Education Funding is next. So that's specific to the preschool. We use these funds to purchase the following materials needed for the Early Childhood Special Education Program, which serves students with disabilities in our pre-K program. Instructional and assessment materials, testing protocols and kits, applications for assistive technology devices, and consumables that are replenished annually. The funds were also utilized for professional development for special education and related service personnel. Now we have Part Two of the plan. The Virginia Department of Education is required by federal. The Virginia Department of Education is required by federal regulation to ensure that we comply with IDEA, which is the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, which mandates that school divisions spend at least the same amount of local or local plus state dollars for a current school year on the delivery of special education and related services as were spent the previous year. That's the maintenance of effort. We use our December one child count. And this year, our December one child count was 686 students. Those are students with IEPs. We minus the number of students funded through the CSA and regional programs, which this year is 32. That leaves us with 654 students. This is the number then that the states use to estimate the local amount projected for next year, estimated based on the current budget projections. If you could take a minute now and look at page 10 for me, I just want to point out a couple of, of the cells. So if you go to the application on page 10, you'll look at the cell that's labeled CEIS is under 611D. And you'll see at the very bottom, the total proposed budget is zero. We are currently not required to set aside 15% of the funding toward the coordinated early intervention services or CIS. So that amount is zero. Divisions are only required to set aside funds if they're found to have a disproportionate number of students with disabilities that are identified. If you look to the bottom, the next cell over to the right, you're going to see proportionate set aside funding that was calculated to be $4,246.90 for next year. These funds are set aside to provide occupational therapy, physical therapy or speech to students with disabilities residing in the community but attending a private school or homeschooling within the community. The state PSA formula was used to calculate this figure. It takes into account the number of students identified with a disability under IDEA who currently homeschool and may be eligible to receive services under a service plan and sets aside funding to support the school division serving those students through a service plan up to the projected funding amount for the year. This funding is set aside in the personnel line mainly that goes to covering cost of staff that service the students. If we could look at page 13. On page 13, you'll see that we are projecting to spend the majority of the funds on the special education staff, funding up to 11 full-time employees. And the remainder of the grant fund will service, will be related to services for students with IEPs or necessary for, that are providing for the students with disabilities a free, appropriate public education. It will also cover evaluations, travel reimbursements for staff, speakers contracted to provide staff development, more assistive technology, supplies, materials and professional development. So if you finally look at page 16, you'll see that this is specific to the early childhood preschool. And if you look at the bottom number, the total budget is $21,263. And this covers contracted providers, assistive technology, instructional and assessment materials, consumables, additional technology needs and support for professional development for our preschool. So at this time, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have at this time.
And this has to be approved by us, right?
Yes, sir.
Any questions for Ms. Howard? Is there?
Yes, ma'am. Um, I, I have a comment, actually, I just, um, I appreciate the presentation in the background. It was kind of a fresh look to how this is proposed to us in the past. So thank you for the insight.
Absolutely, yeah. It's, it's very confusing, but if you just remember, 611 is for everyone K-12, 619 is for the preschool. So thank you, Ms., for that feedback, Ms. Gonzalez. Anybody else?
So Ms. Howard, as a background, I've mentioned this before that Dr. Boyd, Ms. Hawk, myself spoke with the homeschool community.
Right.
I think in February, maybe it was. And one of their main concerns they brought up was that sometimes, at least some of them had mentioned they had the experience of being turned away for special education.
Okay.
So since we're setting this money aside.
Yes, sir.
I'm just trying to understand how that works, how that was calculated and.
Great question. That's a great question. So what happens is in that December one count that I referred to, that, that includes students who are homeschooled. And we have an account of students that have a service plan, right? So they're homeschooled, but they, they might need speech or occupational therapy or physical therapy. So the state has their formulas and they know because they're the ones that have, they also have our December one count. So based on those numbers, they give us that $4,000 number that was in the formula.
May, may I make an additional statement?
Absolutely.
Only because I, I, I used to do this formula. And I, I, in our conversation with the parents, one of the pieces that was not always clearly understood is that that count is only based on students who identify to the school system that they are homeschooled, either religious exemption or one of the other clauses. So if we don't, if they are not identified to the school system by virtue of, for example, religious exemption, then we don't know, we, the state, nobody knows that they're there in order to increase that number to receive services and thereby increase that PSA formula. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'll follow on on that. So December one, so if you have a new kindergartner who has some sort of disability, they won't be included in that, right? Because they wouldn't have been a student as of December 1st.
Right, but I believe what they do is a projection based on historical numbers. That's a great question though.
So we would accept them and the money would be there based on historic, into history.
Yes, sir.
So, but we wouldn't turn them down.
No.
I'm just curious in this meeting why they said that they were turned down. Was that some of the things you were talking about, Ms. Hawk, that maybe they, that we didn't, the division didn't even know they existed?
Exactly. And, and, and that is the part that we called child find, right? So we're doing everything we can to kind of outreach and, and to really bridge that communication. So it's, it's really great feedback, Mr. Rolls. And I can tell you that we're, that is really one of the goals of the CAC committee this year is to, to communicate and collaborate with all the stakeholders in the community. And we've had some really successful events with lots of homeschool families that have come. So hopefully that will give them more information to be able to request those services if needed.
Okay, so $4,000, do we like charge against that? Is there some point where we say, all right, we spent our money, we're out? Or how does that work?
You know what? That's a great question. I thought about that myself and I went back and looked and it's never been the case that we didn't have the money. So I think we'll be in good shape.
So I mean, we were already paying for the teachers, so we're not, you know, $4,000 paid for like a personal teacher, so.
Well, this is money, this, this is grant money, right? So this has nothing to do with like the local budget. This is just extra money that we get from the state.
That's good. Any other questions?
Great questions. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that Ms. Howard has had a very long day. She started, hey. She started off with amazing feet meet, right? Used to be meet in the middle today and did a wonderful job with that that I wanted to recognize and presented this evening. So thank you so much for your hard work.
Great night. So check it out on Facebook. I know Ms. Higgins just put it out there and we'll get everybody lots of notice next year. So you're more than welcome to come. Sorry about that, Mr. Bush.
That's all right. Yeah, is this time sensitive? Can we put it as an action item for next time or do you need a decision right away?
You know what? Ideally, if you could vote tonight, great, but please don't feel pressured. I, I do need to get it in like the first week in May. So if you have more questions and need more time, you can do it next week.
General question, what's the will of the board with that? This is one of the things we were talking about a while ago.
Right.
Unless there's a problem, I think it might help, Ms. Howard, if we could approve it. All right, do I have a motion then?
I move that we approve the, the special education annual plan and part B flow through application.
As presented.
As presented.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Rolls. Any discussion, any more discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, Carl D. Perkins Career and Technical Education Grant.
Good evening, Mr. Bush, Dr. Boyd and school board members. I'm here to present the information for the Carl D. Perkins Grant. So the Carl D. Perkins Grant supports career and technical education. Mostly our funding supports equipment for the CTE program. And we spend approximately 70% of our funding on equipment. The other areas that we spend funding on include professional development, travel reimbursement associated with professional development, reimbursements for signing up for different conferences and things like that for our CTE teachers. In addition, we can support students in subgroups or non-traditional groups in attending their conferences with their CTSOs or their career and technical student organizations. We do not use the funding for personnel. So it's all for equipment and improving programs. And this also is a formula grant, which the state sends to our division. And we allocate the funds accordingly to the grant, which you have there. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So I'm looking, the total amount is right towards the end, is that that $55,397, is that correct?
That's correct, $55,309.
77 and 6.
And 67.
Some sense.
And that is this year's funding. So we have not been given our allocation for this year. The way the state presents this particular grant, this particular formula grant, is that they have us write the grant based on this current year's total allocations. And then we have to submit, I have to submit by the 31st of this month. And then the state will later come back and give us the actual allocation for the next school year. And then I will have to adjust my grant in alignment with the new numbers that they send us. And those numbers could go down. So all of these federal grants that are formula grants, including Ms. Howard's and Title I and Title II and Title III and Title IV, they, they are supposed to support our programming, but not be the fundamental basis for our programming. So our, our local division is supposed to support our programming. And then these are to make them even better.
Questions? I have one. I think you already referred to this a little bit, but obviously this $55,000 and some dollars is, is, does the state usually come back? Is it usually close to that or is it always less or what?
So we have been in a season where the state really wants to support career and technical education. So during this season, we have been getting more money, not a whole lot more money, but maybe a couple thousand dollars more money. But there are other funding pots that we get from the state that fund state equipment or testing because our students have to take assessments and certifications. And so those funding streams will also come in from the state that help to support the program.
Okay, good. Any other questions anybody has? So I'm assuming this, you said this has to be approved before the end of the month.
Yes, so I shared this plan with our career and technical education teachers during their, their meetings at the school. And then also today, we had a career and technical advisory committee meeting today. It was shared with our advisory members today. And also, we have to share it with our partner, Rappahanna Community College. So all of, everyone has seen the grant and has supported the grant. And so my final step is to ask the board for approval of accepting this money as well.
All right, so obviously this is time sensitive, it has to be done by the end of the month. We have one more board meeting, but we want to be careful not to pile it on. Is there any reason why we could not make an action item of this, board members? Do I have a motion?
Can I confirm the amount was $55,000?
It's right at towards the end, maybe one page before the last one.
So that doesn't have a, sorry, okay, that amount. I move that we approve the Carl D. Perkins Grant in the amount of. There we go.
Have a second?
I second.
Seconded by Ms. Hoover, now discussion or clarification, yes.
We're approving the application, right? We're applying to, I forget, it's the state or federal and they're the ones who approve it.
We're applying for the funding and it's a federal funded grant that is pushed out through the state.
Right. Okay. It's a good question. Any other questions before we vote? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, it passes unanimously. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
All right, committee reports. Let's start with Ms. Gonzalez.
Certainly, thank you, Mr. Bush. So I have two committee reports. So my first is from the technology advisory committee meeting, which was held on Tuesday, March 28th. So there was a good news story that I thought I would share. So, you know, there are always technical and IT challenges, right? But so the middle school had SOLs, I think that day on the 28th, it was that week, maybe the day before. And they were happy to report that they had no issues with connectivity across the, across the building other than user errors, of which I believe there were only three, which is pretty good considering the number of students. Apparently there were 350 devices on the network and there were no issues. So I think that's like pretty impressive. So way to go. To, you know, kudos to our technology department and, and to the middle school for pulling that off. And then beyond that, there was some discussion on how we are continuing to integrate our digital learning standards, which are put out as requirements for us and how we're integrating them into our curriculum. So we're currently, they're currently in the process of developing a plan to integrate those standards into existing curriculum. And that really many teachers are already doing that on a daily basis with the usage of technology in the classroom, teaching our kids how to be good digital citizens and understanding lasting digital progress, those sorts of things anyway. So a lot of really good content. But they're talking about, you know, continuing to evaluate how that gets integrated into the school day. And then also discussed issuing a technology survey before the end of the year and what type of information would be useful to get from families on technology usage and a variety of other things. So that was not, you know, finalized, but that there was discussion on the subject. And then my, the second advisory committee meeting, I actually was unable to attend, which I do regret, but the Title I advisory committee meeting was held on Tuesday, April 4th. I do have minutes from that, so in, in to be in compliance with our latest, I think, our communication planner, what we talked about, our retreat the other week, I will send those minutes out. Excuse me, but the, the highlights. So a family survey also goes out to the Title I families and to, to seek feedback and, you know, confirm understanding of the, the services that are provided and understanding how the program is implemented. So the results of that were discussed. The schools provided updates on the family event nights. So Sealston held their Title I math night on, or yeah, they held it on the 30th, on March 30th. And apparently had 75 families in attendance, which sounds like a pretty good turnout. Potomacad is having their Title I night in, holding it in conjunction with the Night of the Arts next Thursday, I believe, on April 20th. So that should be a good, good event as well. And I believe King George is still planning theirs. And then there was discussion of how the Title I grant funding gets used. And also discussed apparently prior to COVID, the schools had title, had school-based Title I committees that were, you know, focused on their school communities. And so they're looking to reinstate that next year to enhance parent involvement. So that is what I have for committee reports this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Ms. Hawk?
I have none.
Mr. Rolls?
I did mention this last time, but we had the retreat for the Commonwealth Governor's School last month. And we did update some, have some proposed updates to some of our foundational documents, the constitution, and then perhaps also the bylaws and the joint agreement for the governor's school. Those just came back just a day or two ago, not enough time to be ready for this meeting. But so I think those have already been forwarded to you, but they'll be in the packet now for next meeting and we can go over any concerns about any of those changes at that point. I'll ask for your approval before I go back for our meeting to vote on that. That's all.
Ms. Hoover?
I have none.
All right, well, I do. I attended the SED, Special Education Advisory Committee meeting on March twenty-ninth, led by Ms. Howard, sorry. Led by Ms. Howard, she did an excellent job. In fact, a lot of things I was going to report on, she just mentioned it and went over it. About the six eleven and the six nineteen grants, and thank you for doing that. There was two things that she didn't talk about, which I thought were very good. And one of them was this Parent Resource Center, which is, it was talked about in the committee and such a positive thing about having all of these entities coming from King George, from Fredericksburg, from different places, providing resources for parents, for students with special needs. And so, I mean, it was wonderful, I attended the night, and this is going to be something that looks like is going to be permanent. And so, there's a lot of enthusiasm on the committee about it. And a lot of enthusiasm, it was mentioned that this is done in many other divisions around us with great success. And it will really be a benefit to King George schools. And then, also, at some point in the future, as this grows, maybe even have an area in one of the schools in the library or whatever, to actually have a place where a lot of these materials are stored and can be kept, whether it's an area of a library, or it's a special small room, especially with the possibility of the new preschool being built, maybe somewhere in there. And then, also was mentioned, and is Tadpole, this new software program that goes with iPads, is that right? Okay, and people were super excited about it. It communicates apparently at another whole level. It helps the teachers communicate with the parents, communicate with the students. And I mentioned it already with somebody that was talking about, we meet with, Ms. Hoover and I have gone to four of our schools so far. And one of the comments was made by a special education teacher about, you know, wanting to do a better job with informing parents and this. And I mentioned Tadpole, and I know it's just new and it's just coming out. But I just mentioned a little bit about it, and I told her to contact you, and just the concept was very exciting to her. So, I was very good to hear. I'll tell you, what I found really interesting about that committee is, you know, a lot of times you attend these kinds of committees and people are giving reports, oh, that's nice. And they're, but the excitement of all the teachers that were there were just, I mean, it was, I don't know, it was contagious. They were just super excited, and special ed is a very difficult area to teach in, I'm sorry, but it is. And to see the excitement of all those people that are on that table, I don't know how many were there, maybe eight? But they were all super excited about what they do and the jobs they have. And so, kudos to you, Ms. Howard, for your leadership in that area. So, that ends my report. And next, we have the superintendent's report.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. I want to first take the opportunity to thank our board members and thank our board of supervisors members. We did a little less than a week ago, have a joint board session where we discussed our budgets. And I thought it was very productive. I think it's a very challenging task before both boards. But I think the environment is one that's very conducive to working together and one that's very collegial in nature. So, I thank you guys, and I thank everyone that is and will continue to be part of that process. Along those same lines, you know, a peripheral part of this budget process is the CIP, the Capital Improvement Plan. And last night, I had the opportunity of presenting that to the Planning Commission. So, the Planning Commission will take all of the capital improvement projects from nine different departments in the county and rank those, and then, turn those into our board of supervisors members as far as the items that they feel have the most and the least significance as far as getting completed sooner than later. So, that process began last night, and then, I'm looking forward to a date to present the CIP to the board of supervisors when that opportunity comes. I spoke to Mr. Gorman, Dr. Gorman, and he wanted me to send his regards to all of our board members. So, he had a wonderful time and spoke very highly of the experience he thought we all had at the retreat. So, I told him I would pass those regards on to you. And he and I together have drafted a communication plan. So, I sent that to you guys in email. If you have time and an opportunity, or any feedback that you guys would have on that document would be greatly appreciated. And I'll be prepared to present a final copy at our twenty-sixth board meeting. And then, finally, the weekly newsletters. I'm working on finalizing some details with those and hope to get that rolling here around the May timeframe. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Dr. Boyd. All right, board comments, and we will start with our illustrious student representatives. Jackson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. In regards to the unsettling news that we heard from our board, from the public comments this evening, feel it's proper to bring up SSOs. I brought them up earlier this year regarding school safety. Considering that the, one of the problems that was mentioned was the inability to search bags, I feel it would be easier for an SSO perhaps to search a bag since they are agents of the school rather than Sheriff's Department, SROs are agents of the Sheriff's Department, so they are bound constitutionally and Virginia and federal constitution. Core cases like TLO, a couple of years back, allow schools a little bit more leeway when it comes to searches and seizures. So, an SSO may perhaps be a little bit easier. But I feel it's maybe proper to, or do to, bring it up and bring that subject up if maybe next discussion, next meeting, or anytime in the future. And then, on to my, the report I prepared. DECA, this, today was the Feed Me, it hasn't anything to do with DECA, but today was the Feed Me at the King George High School. We haven't had it since 2019, I believe. So, it's nice to see that this is coming back, and it was Feed Me in the middle before. But King George DECA, they're fundraising for the DECA International Career Development Conference in Orlando. Nine students are attending. Jenna Wines and Tyler Billingsley are competing in the Travel and Tourism Team Decision Making. Kaitlin Winger and Madeline Winfrey in the Aspire Academy. Lenique Morgan and Virginia Yergi in the Ignite Academy. And Tyler Trusslow, Lindsay Spielman, and Amer Tate in the Thrive Academy. The King George DECA will attend the Education Day at the Fredericksburg Nationals. On the nineteenth, King George DECA will attend the DECA Marketing Day at King's Dominion. On the, on May nineteenth, officer applications are being taken for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. The King George DECA Awards will be held May sixteenth at five-thirty in the King George High School Library. And then, for our theater department, I mentioned last meeting of the assessments that were going on, both the wind ensemble and the concert band received excellent ratings. Senior William Leonard will be representing the high school at the All-Virginia Band in Richmond, excuse me, on the twenty-seventh through the twenty-ninth. The art show and the Band Spring Concert is Wednesday, May tenth. The Jazz Ensemble will be performing for the high school award tonight on May twelfth. And they will have additional performances, Fredericksburg, with the Fredericksburg Big Band on Sunday, May twenty-first. Band students will perform music for graduation on the twenty-second. The piano recital went on April fourth. Kids are all getting much more comfortable performing, which is always good. Both choir, both choirs received excellent ratings at the assessments, so that's awesome. And then, SpongeBob Musical is coming soon, so May third through the sixth. The musical is running, and all of the performing arts programs are being used. So, our theater department, of course, the band will be performing. And then, our chorus director is helping the actors prepare their voice. And then, some messages from the band department. They are in need of concert tubas, split between two high school bands. They have five tuba players and three tubas. They've been running a quarter-sized tuba from the local music shop since the beginning of the year. And they, it would be beneficial to have an additional school in tuba so that the, there is no rental payment needed. And that is all from me.
Devin?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, to start, I'd like to report on our band's performance at our assessment, which was, actually took place, I believe, the day after the last meeting. So, I am proud to report that our band received a superior rating, which makes King George Middle School a blue-ribbon school for music education. This is when all of our music programs receive top scores, and this is the highest award given to music programs in the state of Virginia. I think that this was an absolutely exceptional result and a testament to the hard work put into this turnout. So, next on my list is the Spirit Week that we're going to have next week. So, for this Spirit Week, we have a couple of observances that we will, we will be celebrating, which include Patriot Day, which is in the third Monday of April, as well as in September. As mentioned before, the Purple Out Day that the high school is having on Wednesday, I think that was April nineteenth. We are also having that as a Spirit Day. We are also having a Blue Out Day for Autism Acceptance Month and a Blue and Green Day for Earth Day. So, I think that celebrating these important holidays is just, I think it's very necessary to have in our schools. And I hope that students enjoy it as much as they find it significant. So, recently, the eighth graders in our school had to take a writing SOL and a field test that was released by the Department of Education, the Virginia Department of Education, as a possible new testing format. And so, these were just two tests that a third of the school took a couple of weeks ago. But it made me aware that the end-of-year tests are coming up. They are rapidly approaching. And as a final note, we had our tours for our rising sixth graders who are, will be coming to the middle school from Sealston, King George, and Potomac Elementary. So, I can personally say as a part of the leadership team, that was a big part of the tour. It was, it was just an amazing experience just to get to see the up-and-coming middle schoolers and what they think about what we do on a day-to-day basis. And I think it's just an amazing thing to see these students looking up to the school and being excited about being a part of the school in the next, in the next coming years. All right, that's my report for tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bush. Although, I'll admit there, you two set high bars here. It's a hard, a tough act to follow in your, in your comments, so thank you both. I do actually have quite a lengthy board comment on a variety of topics today. So, I'll, I don't know, apologize in advance, I'm not sure what the word is. So, one thing I did want to ask, perhaps that we could have policy J F C K, our cellular telephone use policy, reviewed, if we could get an update at one of our future meetings. I know we've heard from some teachers at Sealston about that policy and their concerns about devices in the classroom. So, I know, I know that was being looked at as a part of that ad hoc committee, but if we could get an update on what that looks like, that'd be great. I'd also like to request that we get an agenda item on a future meeting to discuss the process for naming athletic facilities, such as was recently proposed by a parent community member. I think, just, you know, to find out what that entails. And then, I did want to address Ms. Niemi and Ms. Deloche that came this evening. So, thank you for coming and speaking up. I know, considering, you know, the heartbreaking number of school shootings that we see in national news these days, I wholeheartedly agree with both of you that the discovery of a bullet in an elementary school classroom is rightly terrifying. I have first and third graders at Potomac Elementary, and I've given a lot of thought to how I would have reacted if that letter had come home to Potomac families. And, you know, my children pretend to play lockdown drills in our living room, and it breaks my heart. I'm relieved that they don't seem to know why they're doing them. And I hope they can maintain that innocence for as long as possible. But I know that day will come that they lose that innocence. So, I know Ms. Deloche did comment on how our hands are a bit tied based on the Virginia DOE school search policies. And at the same time, it is true that we also need to be concerned with the reactions of parents and students who may feel violated if we were to just search lots of students, right, without, you know, reasonable suspicion. So, there are a lot of hard facts to consider in these cases. To that end, I'm certainly open to having a conversation as a board about maybe how we could improve some of our communications to families in these situations. And Mr. Rosner, I hear you're on your recommendation about SSOs. And I would like to highlight that this budget, this year's budget, does include, does include two SSOs for the division. So, one at the middle school and one at the high school, which I do hope we're able to fund and staff. And so, I know, I'd made this comment at the joint budget session with the board of supervisors last week. But if, I feel like if we take a step back and look at big picture, big-picture trends and big-picture things, right, that the more we invest, the more that we're able to invest in our students and our teachers and providing opportunities to have engaged staff who are connecting with our students and providing them with meaningful life opportunities, we ultimately lower the risk of our students engaging in unhealthy behaviors and violence. And so, all of that being said, I do encourage all of our parents and community members and students and anyone who feels that it's prudent right to come out to the board of supervisors meetings and make public comment in favor of them fully funding the school budget so that we are able to fund all of our positions and provide all of the needs for our students and our staff. And then, that's a good segue to my next points, which are maybe a little bit lighter-hearted. So, the latest federal advocacy update that we received from V S B A did actually, it was timely and encouraged school divisions to apply for the Bipartisan Safe Communities Act funding to address school safety and reduce community violence. So, there were two programs. The first one was Student Teachers and Officers Preventing School Violence Program, so the Stop School Violence Program. It's grant funding to prevent violence that can be used to hire personnel, train school personnel, a variety of things. And it can be used, you know, in multiple, multiple ways. Anyway, the deadline to apply is May fifteenth. Apparently, there's two hundred million available for that one. And then, the other one was Community-Based Violence Intervention and Prevention Initiative Program. It's two hundred and fifty million dollars of additional grant funding that can be used for community-driven intervention programs, you know, mental health services, violence interventions, those sorts of things. Anyway, and the application period was extended for that one through May twenty-fifth. So, I assume perhaps, Dr. Boyd, you have that info already, but I wanted to bring it to attention. And then, on a totally different note, it also included a note on how the USDA is extending the comment period on school nutrition standards. I know some of us have discussed this maybe even offline at other times, but I thought this was kind of, this excited me, right? So, under the new proposal, schools would have to offer mostly whole grain products with the occasional choice of enriched grain products, beginning in fall 2024. Weekly sodium limits would have to drop by ten percent for breakfast and lunch by fall 2025. And high-sugar yogurt and cereal products will be limited. On top of that, added sugars will be reduced to less than ten percent of calories per week for breakfast and lunch by fall 2027. They would reduce sodium limits by another ten percent, and sodium, anyway, so on and so forth. Anyway, there, the email provided links to provide comment on the standard, standards, which I intend to do. I'm in favor of all those sorts of things and continue to provide as many healthy options for our kids as possible. So, moving on to my last portion of my comment, and then, I'll shut my trap. I know we talked about the superintendent evaluation process. Mr. Bush and I met, spoke a little bit about that, so I apologize I didn't get this ahead of time. But so, my thoughts on timeline of events for this would be at our next meeting. We could, I could put together a draft for everyone to review. We could look at the superintendent evaluation rubric, survey, discuss survey types. Though, the ones that I had, the example that I provided previously, I think, could be tailored. Perhaps we could do like a leadership survey that would go to board members and division leadership, and a climate survey to student parents and community members, but we could talk about that. We could discuss the survey contents, superintendent self-evaluation, what we would expect from that, and kind of, so talk about what that framework would look like. And a lot of that can be pulled from materials that are already in existence. And then, I would propose that the following, we, following meeting on Monday, May eighth, we could approve and release the survey so that we could get it out to our staff before the school year ended. We could review our policies and our superintendent contract and discuss if we needed to make any changes at our Wednesday, May twenty-fourth meeting. We could do our superintendent, or have our superintendent self-evaluation due to us, update and approve our policy- due to us, um, update, approve our policies or contract. And then on the fifth, compile the data that we've gotten. Um, and then beyond that, I know like we need the end of the year when it would all be wrapped up. Um, and we need a little more information around when we, we can expect our performance data so that we can use that and pile it all together. Um, but that was kind of where, where I was. So I can, um, type it up and send it out to everyone if that works.
Good. Thank you. Excellent.
And that's all I have.
Well, mine will be short by definition. It's, I, I had a difficult day with dental surgery.
Oh, sorry.
I want to, first of all, acknowledge our student representatives. I, I can't remember, we've had many, many excellent students as student representatives on this board, but I can't remember any who are as excellent and outstanding as these two young men. And, um, I, we are certainly, um, thankful to the parents uh, who have been in regular attendance to support them and, uh, for, for all the years that went into making these two young men, we appreciate it. Uh, and we look forward to hearing their futures because they're going to be very bright, I'm sure. Um, I was present at the band, um, assessment. Thank you. Um, and, um, it, it was remarkable. It, it was, there were, there were not a lot of us in the audience, but a lot of other bands there to, to play. And, uh, our, we, uh, we could not be prouder of our music department. And, and I think it just, every year we get better and better. And, um, I wish I could win the lottery and buy five tubas, concert tubas. Um, and, and I do encourage people to, uh, when, when they run across an instrument, perhaps that, that you know of, or, uh, that you might have access to, to contact the music departments and, and see if, uh, they're in need of baritone ukuleles, for example, or concert tubas. Um, and I am so proud that King George Middle School is a blue ribbon school for music education. That's, music is certainly a part of our lives and a part of our therapies and, and a part of our, um, innermost feelings and beings. It supports all functions of the brain. We are very, very honored to have our instructors, all of them, uh, including our theater department in that group. Um, so I'm, I'm very proud of, of all of, of those activities. Um, I'm delighted to hear that there's going to be a revival of the Parent Resource Center. Um, we have a history of having had excellent, excellent, um, physical place for lots of parents to come, including homeschool parents who use that very frequently. Um, and I, I'm looking forward, I, I'll volunteer right now to be part of that project if you need extra hands. Um, the C T E grant, uh, as well as the special education plan were amazing. I, I do know what goes, the work and the hours that go into those. And, and I want to thank all the staff involved because there are so many levels of effort. And, um, I will pass along to Mr. Rolz. Thank you.
I will echo Mr. Hox. Congratulations or compliments to the student representatives. Very impressive to hear the legal opinion from you, Mr. Jackson. I'm sure it's just me the first of many as you move on to, uh, your educational career and law school and all that good stuff. Uh, and Devin, thank you for bringing us up to speed. Let's know that we're continuing to be a blue ribbon school for the middle school. That's very exciting and certainly something they're very proud of. And as far as recognitions, it's great to hear from the student to student group. It's wonderful that we as a community are so welcoming to the children of military, uh, service members. I don't know if it's P C says anymore, but we used to call them military brats. Uh, that was, that's a technical term, but so it's good. I mean, that's not easy being, being an alter brat and possibly moving constantly and making new friends. So the fact that we're so welcoming to them is, is a great testament to who we are as a division. And also congratulations to all the students who represented us so well in the regional art contest. That's great to see. Saw some pretty art just when they came up here. And of course, the relationship between your parents and educators is super important. So great to see that that's going strong. We get good leadership from our P T leaders. Very much appreciate that and take the time to recognize our excellent educators. So thank you for that as well. So since the last meeting, did have the honor of attending the junior R C military ball, which is always very impressive. And also reflects well on the division to see that the keynote speaker was graduate from last year. Believe the name now is Midshipman McGraw, who came back and spoke as a first year midshipman at Naval Academy, did an excellent job, very articulate. Uh, not sure that I could match that at that point in my life. So yeah, I'll have more impressive. I went for, uh, Steelston also their night of the arts earlier this month. That was a good time. Uh, they put on the play Wizard of Oz, which was on hold since 2020 because of COVID. So I think they're very happy to finally pull all those props out and get to use them and obviously had a great time doing it. Uh, choir also did an excellent job and then ran out the arts. They have a lot of artwork in the halls. And I think it was a stroke of genius, uh, to have a scavenger hunt for the kids to go find different pieces of art. Uh, I had one very persistent third grader who would not let us leave until we find everything. So apologies to Mrs. uh, Sheddin for taking us around, helping us find those last few things. Appreciate that very much. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Rolz. Ms. Hoover.
I also attended the, uh, ROTC ball last Friday night and, uh, I was super impressed with all the students who received awards and, and it was just a, a super, super night. Um, it's a great group of people, uh, students. Um, and spring sports is like hot and heavy. I'm trying to attend as many as I can, but I got to tell you, I could be out every night of the week. Um, but kudos to our, our student athletes. They're doing a great job. And then lastly, um, Mr. Bush and I are finalizing our visits to the elementary schools this month. We're cramming them all in before testing and, and the kids don't want to see adults in the building anymore because they just want to go home. Um, but, uh, we have, uh, yesterday we visited Potomac and boy, the students there were super excited just to, to be back at school after their vacation, their, their re-facation. Um, and then next week we're visiting, um, Steelstone on Monday and King George Elementary on Friday. And that will be our, our whole round of visits for this, this school year. So that's all I got.
And thank you, Ms. Hoover. Um, I have a few things. One is that, um, the board members, let's remember that, uh, the, um, next meeting on the 26th, that I sent all of you the formative, um, evaluation for the superintendent. There's 12 items there, eight from the standards from V S B A and four from the strategic plan. Some of them overlap and remember, you know, great, these are just comments. And this is just, uh, to give the superintendent a feel of to where he is at this point. And we will discuss those in close session, obviously, uh, on the 26th. So just be sure to get those in. And if you can't respond to all of them, it's okay. If you need to leave one blank, that's fine. Um, all right, um, school safety, it's been mentioned several times and I'd already written it down and appreciate comments from the parents. Um, I spoke to several parents actually on the phone in the last week or so. And then a couple, um, online, I mean, excuse me, a couple on messaging and text messages and Jackson, Ms. Gonzalez. So we, I would like to put that obviously on the agenda for the next board meeting. If you hadn't already put that, if you would please, just general topic, school safety. I've got some ideas. I've talked to superintendent. I know all of us may have some ideas, but we need to get this out there to let the parents know this is an ongoing discussion and it's very, very important and we all agree. Um, all right, um, I wanted to, thanks to King George Elementary School. In fact, my, you probably should say this, but my granddaughter was one of the ones leading the pledge. And so that's kind of cool to see my granddaughter there. Um, but, um, thanks to them. And then also the safety patrol and what they're doing with that. And then the recognition of the student to student, uh, the month of the military child and the regional spring forum art contest and the P T A. Um, congratulations to all of those. That's wonderful. Um, and then also the, um, um, yeah, I, we, she's already, Ms. Hoover and I, I've been meeting with the teachers and boy, at Potomac, I'm telling you, it was, I don't think we had a teacher that didn't say how happy they were to be at Potomac. Um, but that didn't mean they have ideas and comments because they, a lot of them did. And, um, I, uh, I'm sorry that in the past I usually type all those out and then I talk with the superintendent, but I'll send all those to the rest of you. I don't know why I didn't do that before. Forgive me. All there is, just these are the comments the teachers made. We didn't respond really. We just maybe some clarification things. So I'll send that to all of you too. It's just kind of bulleted, you know, what the teachers mentioned in those three hours that we were there during lunch. Um, and one of the things too, that we also told them, which was surprising, many of the teachers didn't realize. He said, well, I'm sure more than just the two of us would like to be here, but we can't have three or more because then it constitutes a board meeting and they didn't realize that. Um, so then it was much more acceptable because we didn't want to make them feel that, you know, the other board members, of course, would like to be there too, but not, we can't ever have more than three, which is understandable. Um, the communication plan, thank you, uh, Dr. Boyd for already, um, working on that and submitting that. And, um, I appreciated, uh, Ms. Gonzalez and I, she already mentioned this, that we were meeting about the superintendent's evaluation. And, um, she has some great ideas. And so again, thank you for, uh, taking the ball and running with that. Appreciate it very much because you got experience from last year. And that's a very valuable component to use your experience. I've already gone through that. And also the new concepts that you learned at that, uh, um, session that you attended. I also attended the military ball and I, this is the second one I attended and, um, I, it was nice. It was nice seeing especially so many students that are, that have a vision for their future and that are highly disciplined as they're working toward that vision. Um, you just don't always see that. So kudos to the whole, um, junior ROTC program. It's, uh, it's really looks like it's doing extremely well. So thank you. All right. So that's it for the, um, comments. And now if we have someone that can make a motion to go into closed session.
First, went to state code section 2 dot 2 dash 3711 dot A dot 1. For the purposes of discussion, consideration of perspect- prospective candidates for employment, assignment of substitutes, stipends, resignations, terminations and retirements of employees of the school board. I make a motion to move to closed session. A second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close session. All right. Do we have a motion to return to open session and also to certify?
I move that the King George County School Board return to open session and certify pursuant to state code 2.2-3712.D, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the public body.
I second and certify.
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 I also certify, all those in favor of going to open session, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye. We are now in open session. All right. Now, do we have a motion to approve the personnel presented?
I move that we approve personnel is presented.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, and so all of them are approved. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, we are adjourned. Thank you.